All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Today is April 3rd, 2023. We'll start with a roll call.
Carmen?
Present.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Here.
McConnell?
Here.
Krieger?
Present.
Next is the consent agenda. That will be approval of the agenda, approval of the claims, approval of minutes from March 20th, 2023, approval of special Class C retail alcohol license BW to Atomic Pizza Pub LLC, DBA Atomic Pizza Pub, and number five, approval of application for tax abatement under the urban revitalization plan for Steven Burke.
So moved.
Second.
Buska?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Next is staff reports. We'll start with public works.
We've had two water main breaks in the last couple of weeks here. The first one was on Second Street West between Fourth and Fifth Avenue, and the other one was over the weekend. It actually happened on Saturday. It was on Second Street East between First and Second Avenue East, but they didn't dig it until today. The first yard waste pickup of 2023 will be on April 17th. That is two weeks from today. And just a reminder that if you're using bags, they must be biodegradable. Then last Friday, while CIT was here, we had them clean the storm sewer on Second Avenue West between Fourth Avenue and Third Avenue or Street, Third and Fourth Street. And that main through there is not good. So we have come to the conclusion that we'll probably do that. We're going to replace that pipe there. We'll have the street department do that, but it's clay and it's collapsing, and they pulled back a lot of rocks and everything else from there. So that'll be something that the street guys will do this summer.
How long an area, two, couple of blocks?
No, probably a whole block. It's roughly 450 feet.
Okay.
And that's by a manual church, a manual Lutheran?
Correct. Yep, yep. And then they started with the tree removal and the culvert replacement on the bike trail project today, so hopefully in a few months that project will be completed. Totally.
All right. Next, Police Department Chief is here.
For the month of March, officers did go ahead and attend some training last week at the Iowa Narcotics Officers Association Training. That seemed to be very good training. They have actually brought some of that back and used it this last week, so. And then also had another officer that attended some crisis intervention, de-escalation training, and he's been able to use that already this week, so. For the month of March, warrants were up quite a bit, and then our total arrests and charges filed were up quite a bit, along with our OWIs. But yeah, so far the month of March has been kind of busy for us.
All right.
Tim, just one minute. With Highway 9 closing now, with the amount of traffic coming into Cresco, up the Protobin Road, any plans of doing anything different? I see the light. I was out there a couple of days ago, the light was not up on the far end of town.
So we're going to have to go ahead, bring that down and check that out as far as batteries. We believe that's what's going on with our north side sign, is the batteries were bad on those.
Okay.
So we're in the process of trying to get some bolts on those batteries to get them replaced. So we're going to also have to take down that south side sign because that was intermittent. So we're figuring that has a battery failure as well.
Okay.
So we're going to try to get that taken care of as well.
Well, I got my first call today already off that road, so. I mean, it's inevitable we're going to have a boatload of traffic coming up, and so we're going to have to approach it differently.
Yeah, and I think that's probably going to be our main area of concern.
Okay.
During this time is looking for speeders and traffic violations.
Perfect. Thank you.
Those batteries are how old?
Well, see, we've had those signs already almost five years.
So they're original, I suppose?
Yep.
Yeah.
There's only so many, you know, different charging cycles it can take.
Yeah.
Have we given any more thought to our conversation about purchasing a couple more for the school area up there?
I think it would be a good idea, or else we were even talking just about maybe the flashing signs.
Yep.
So that way during school in session, we could go ahead and do flashing ambers up there. That would warn drivers that it is 15 through there. Because I don't know if we have to have a 15 year round. We could do it where it's 25 zone during the summer and just do 15 during in-school session.
Right. That makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, that's something I suppose we, you know, probably have to talk with Nate too about some signage and get some costs.
Yeah, I'd like to see a proposal, something like that, and because those lights on each end of town do work.
Oh, I know. Yes, they do. But yeah, it's been one of those things where you just got to take it down, try to do different tests on the solar panels along with the batteries. And we tried to charge them up, and they don't want to take a charge for a little bit and die again, so.
Okay.
It's a pretty good indicator the batteries are bad. And now with this south one, it was working intermittently, so some days it worked great, and the next day it'd be bad, so we're figuring the same thing too. Probably just charging cycles finally gave out.
They don't record any information as far as number of cars?
They do go ahead and record information.
They do?
Yes, because it is, you can Bluetooth those through a laptop, and we can go ahead and download all kinds of information off of them.
Speeds and everything?
Yep, speeds, the most, you know, the highest timeframes that we might have, the most speeds if we set parameters on it, things like that. So we could go ahead and take recorded data and just try to specifically post officers down in that location during certain times.
Gotcha.
So, you know, you're not down there running traffic for an hour and getting nothing.
Right.
Tim, you said OWIs were up. Is that like, obviously they call them strangers driving through, or locals?
These have been some locals.
Okay.
Thanks, Tim.
Yep.
Thank you. Next is administration.
So the county assessor has updated the tax abatement information. So we had eight that expired. This is under the urban revitalization plan that we currently have and offer tax abatements for commercial and residential properties. So eight of them expired this year, but we have 42 active, and there's $4,054,000 worth of valuations that we're abating. So they kind of add up, but we amended the plan back in January of 2022 and extended it for residentials from three years to five years. So I think we are seeing a little bit of an impact on our valuations. So as we're talking about other revenues, and there's rollbacks on the commercial properties, right now we're giving them 100% for three years. And if they do the rollback where it's only 80% taxable, maybe we should be thinking about changing some of our tax abatements too, so. Another revenue source that we could look at if we really have to. Bid opening for the downtown Crosswalk Project will be April 6th at 2:30 here at City Hall, and then we'll hold the public hearing on April 17th. Review the bids and a word of contract that night. Nate, Nikki, Amy, and I met with WHKS to discuss procedures of setting up a storm water utility enterprise fund. We will continue to meet, and they gave us some good ideas of what to look for and different ways to run it. So we thought it'd be best if we tried to draft a proposal and then bring it to council, and then we can do a fine tooth after we make some of the big decisions on that. Still waiting to hear from Travis from Piper Sandler on our bond rating. It was supposed to start back in the middle of March, and I still waiting. Every few days, either myself or Alors and Cooney reach out to him, and so hopefully we'll get going on that. And because of the legislative changes coming up and all of the property tax revenue issues, the county supervisors were wondering if the city council would like to meet together and kind of brainstorm if there's anything that we can do working together to either help reduce costs or with personnel issues or things like that. So they were wondering if you'd be willing to meet possibly on April 24th, like at 4 o'clock. They would reschedule their supervisor meeting and have it in the afternoon and then roll right into the joint council meeting, so it would be over at the courthouse.
What day is that?
It's on Monday. The other option was possibly doing it April 17th before our regular meeting, but April 17th, we have a lot of stuff on that agenda, so I'm just afraid you guys, it'd be kind of a lot for one night for you guys.
So what time would it be on the 24th?
We were possibly 4 o'clock, 4:30. I mean, earlier the better for them. They usually meet at 9:00 AM, so.
4:00.
Yeah, works for me.
4:00 on the 24th?
Works.
And like I say, that'll be over at the courthouse in the upstairs. Do you guys all get Citiescape magazines? Are you still getting those mailed to your houses?
I don't.
You don't get one? And you're not getting one?
Uh-uh.
There's some really good articles this month, so I'll make sure to get you guys. Do you want an electronic or do you want the actual paper copy?
Whatever's going on with me.
They'll do either one, so.
I can bring mine in after I need it.
We haven't gotten our written one. We got the electronic one today, but like I said, there were like three pretty good articles in there, so.
Yeah, there usually is a lot of good stuff in there, so. Okay. Anything else, Michelle?
Nope.
Any committee updates?
The airport meeting is this week Wednesday.
Okay. If not, we'll move on to comments from the audience. This portion of the agenda is for comments that are not related to one of the items listed on the agenda. Everyone's quiet? All right. We will move on to item number one under business and public hearing for the proposed property tax levy for fiscal year July 1, 2023 through June 20, 2024.
There were no written objections.
No written objections. Anything else? That will close the public hearing. Next is the resolution approving the maximum property tax dollars for fiscal year ending June 30, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Number three, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an amended professional services agreement with Dixon Engineering for the 500,000 gallon water tower rehabilitation project.
I don't know if, Tim, do you have anything to?
Just questions if anybody had them. That was.
My second is.
Motion's been made in second.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Okay. Number five, I'm sorry, number four, resolution directing notice of public hearing on proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of costs for the 500,000 gallon Toro Ellipse.
That will be April 17th.
So moved.
Second.
Krieger?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Number five, Darren Sickink and Scott Hinky to discuss proposed Seventh Street West reconstruction project.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. So in your council packet, kind of some notes in there regarding what's transpired since the last meeting that we talked. So lots transpired since then. We've since met with property owners that were not, who's developed the project crossing their property. So we've met with the Public Works Committee, kind of discussed the different options that we had. One of those options was to install the storm sewer along the north side of Highway 9, across the H&amp;S or the Sleepy Hollow Auto Dealership property, and then cross Highway 9 to then the side of the road where Windridge implemented, and then go take the storm sewer to Airport Road, and then use Airport Roads right away to bring the water, or storm sewer to, up towards the airport property. So we've since talked with all the property owners along that route and anybody that will require a public easement or utility easement from. They have all sent emails to the city that's saying they would agree to enter into an easement with the city for this project. So there is a designated route that the storm sewer could go. However, in addition to this different route, the route is definitely longer, so that would add additional cost to the project. We estimate somewhere around $284,000. One thing I know, Councilmember Buska had asked about pipe size previously, so when we were originally proposing to go down Seventh Street, that storm sewer was a 48 inch, and that's because it was a flatter route to get there. By going this way, we're able to reduce the pipe size to a 42 inch because the pipe grade or slope is steeper, therefore we can get more water to go through it. So we do have a new route. We also had received an opinion from the attorney regarding the project and the questions that were answered, the legality of the project. That attorney had basically given her the opinion that the city can proceed with this project, so that's what we're recommending, that the city would proceed with the project. We would then collect bids in May and then come back to the council at that point with what we have for the bids.
One question.
Yes.
I noticed in the new route, you have what, one, two, there's three more elbows, basically. That's not going to be restricting?
No, so there'll be structures or manholes there that the water can fill in. Yes, there is some head loss, is what it's called, through those structures, but the pipe models that we have run, computer models that we've run, we still can convey the rain events that we're talking about. And we were talking about the historical 25-year event to get the water out of here, so. Any other questions?
I think we're good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Number six, resolution ordering bids approving plans, specifications, in form of contract and notice to bidders, fixing amount of bid security, and ordering city clerk to post notice, and fixing date for receiving same and for public hearing and for a public hearing on plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate for costs, estimate of costs for the Seventh Street West reconstruction.
That would be April 17th as well?
No, May 1st is the public hearing.
May 1st?
Yep.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
All right, next, Park and Fitness Center Director Brandon Kurian to discuss 24/7 fitness center projects. Go, Brandon.
How's it going, everybody? Good evening. I just wanted to provide a quick update for everyone about the happenings that have been going on in the fitness center and our most recent fundraising campaign. To this point or to recent point, we've come across roughly $162,000 in total pledges aimed towards this project. We are extremely pleased and excited to be able to move forward potentially with an upgrade of this magnitude. The organizing committee that's involved with this campaign met last week to kind of discuss what the project timeline looks like moving forward potentially. So, you know, we kind of settled on, you know, what sort of equipment we are looking to get, and we're looking to hopefully place an order for that here in the next month. The summer looks to be filled with lining up installation dates for locking doors, new doors, the security system. By late summer, early fall, we're looking at the arrival of set equipment, you know, with a grand total and completion of this project sometime this fall. Date on that is obviously yet to be determined, but our goal is sometime this fall to have this whole thing wrapped up and ready to go for members. So I guess the main reason why I am here is to ask the council to entertain the idea of releasing the $30,000 for this project that was originally discussed. The reason for this request is to be able to purchase and replace additional fitness equipment that would be, would not be able to replace with our original funding. This is extremely important to us because upgraded equipment has been the number one request from both members and non-members over the past few years, and something that this whole campaign is based on, as well as 24/7 access to this equipment. This additional funding would not only replace this additional equipment that has been on our floor since 1997 for some of the pieces, but also provide a updated and renovated secure space for our front desk materials at the end of the night. So this would give us a space to lock up all our important documents, obviously the cash register, anything that needs to be locked away and secure at the end of the night. These funds would secure a space to do that. Let me see here. You know, obviously with $162,000 in total pledges thus far, we feel that this project has gained very positive public traction and feedback, and based on, you know, everyone I come in contact with and have conversations with, everyone seems to be very excited for this small town to have such a great, not only fitness center, but project to upgrade that fitness center, so to speak. So with that being said, I did recently apply for a $100,000, dollar-for-dollar match grant through Blue Cross Blue Shield. It's called the Built Environments to be Physically Active in Grant. That will be decided sometime in May whether we get that or not, but I spent a great deal of time researching this grant and talking to the folks who not only put this grant available with RC&amp;D out of Paulsville. I spent a few hours on the phone with them, making sure, you know, if this project we have going on right now is a good fit for their guidelines, what they thought our chances would be to get this grant, and not to put words in their mouth, but they thought we were an excellent candidate for a grant like this. So, you know, with that being said, if things would turn in our favor and we would get that grant, maybe we wouldn't need the 30,000 then. You know, time will tell, I guess, for that, but I just wanted to kind of update everyone and let you guys, I guess, discuss where everyone sits on this project, how they feel about the money towards this project and so on.
This grant from Blue Cross, is that nationwide? Is it one grant, a half dozen grants they're doing?
Nationwide, I'm not sure. I'm sure it probably is.
Okay. You don't know what kind of competition we're up against in?
No idea. No.
Any other questions from council? The fitness equipment, I know at one time it's talked about leasing versus purchasing. And are you purchasing?
Yes, we are.
Yeah.
Does somebody need a motion today, or?
Before we get to a motion or something, I, so this is really great news, and I'm sure a lot of it is your hard work, so thank you. And Scott, where, when are, thank you. When are we going to get to a position where we can look at the long-term future of the building? I mean, we've talked about tearing down the old gym.
Sure.
I mean, I'm just scared that the HVAC system is going to poop out and we're going to not have an idea of where we want to take the facility. So where are we on that long-term look?
Well, based on our committee talks and the park boards' discussions over the past few months, we basically have a three-phase program in mind. This being the first phase, obviously. So, you know, as soon as we get this 24/7 operation up and rolling, our next, call it idea or phase two, would be to start wrapping our heads around possibly a new gym. That's kind of, as far as we've taken it so far, we've obviously thrown around some ideas as far as what this potential new building would possibly look like, rough, very rough, you know, estimates on everything that would be involved in something like that. But we haven't gone into great detail, I guess, for the second phase of the gymnasium.
I personally would like to urge the park board to work on that, to get a plan. I mean, if nothing else, a plan for developing a plan. Because it's a great building, and we just, but we know it has weaknesses, and we need to decide where it's going.
Right now, there's three old boilers?
There's three, one is non-operational.
So we're working on two of the three, and through the winter it was adequate?
Back inspection.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm not saying it's going to die tomorrow, but we're clearly.
I'm guessing it's not going to run on one. I mean.
That's how we run it now.
It is?
That's how we.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Alternate them?
We do alternate them. We run the small one as much as we can. If it gets rigid cold, we turn on the big one.
Sure.
If that makes any sense.
Yep.
Believe me, Dave, every meeting I go to with Brandon, what's the first question I ask you?
How are they doing?
Yeah. And the one that, the one that's not working is not fixable, or we just choose not to fix it?
Correct.
But I mean, there is, remember the ones we took out of the, you know, the fitness part now? They can be used in the gym.
Gotcha.
You had them.
In an emergency-type situations, yes, yeah.
Because we put new ones in the actual fitness.
But even on days like this, when I get in at 6:30 or 7 o'clock in the morning, I usually clean or turn off the boilers, and they're not running most of the day. You know, on days like this, 30, 40 degree weather, I don't even run them during the day. I just turn them on during the night when I leave, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
Your 24/7 project?
Yep.
What do you, attendance? What kind of number are you looking at going forward, increase in memberships?
We anticipate, you know, solely based on the surveys we got that prompted us to do this whole project, we estimate anywhere from 100 to 250, roughly speaking of.
Increase in memberships? Just having the available?
Just purely based on survey results. That's all we go by for that, yeah.
And we have a raise too, because.
Along with conversations with people, you know, that come in every day.
Right.
You know, if my, if we had 24/7, my cousin would want to join because he works second or third shift, or, you know, things like that, so.
And if you, right now it opens at 5:00. Would you still open at 5:00 with people there at 5:00, or?
We would not. We would cut back.
Yeah.
Membership has increased. I think we were like 687, we're 725 now on the last.
725 at our last park board meeting.
Yeah, good.
Yep.
Okay. Any other thoughts or questions?
So like, does that take a resolution for the 30,000? Would we do that now?
So right now, we have it budgeted in the fiscal year '24, so after July 1st. I did do a budget amendment for this year for the expense part since we've received so many pledges this year and kind of recommended that hopefully get these, this equipment ordered, and if we have to pay a down payment or something, we've got the cash available. So I did do a budget amendment so that we can start paying for some of this stuff before July 1st. With the $162,000 we've already received, we would not need our 30,000 until next fiscal year after July 1st, so it's already in the budget. I guess I would probably recommend waiting, see what happens with the.
Blue Cross?
Blue Cross grant, and then.
Yeah.
But if you want to indicate that, yes, we will help out with the project.
I have put together some Excel spreadsheets where we were originally at 230,000, and then we cut back because the 24/7 is going to cost too much. We think we can get into the 24/7 for $15,000 or less, to be honest with you, because we're going to use the same front doors we have right now. And, you know, there we only had 80. And, you know, there we only had $80,000 going towards, and that's with a cushion, going towards fitness equipment. And that fitness equipment's 1997. And Brandon's done a heck of a job. He's gone ahead and put bids out to three different companies. And the one that he picked was push-pull, is that correct? With four-year warranty on the equipment. Even though that's the case, we, as good fiduciaries of the CFC and our donors' money, put a 10% reserve in there. So when you see what we raised, 10% of that $162,000 sits on the sidelines for future maintenance, future things like that. So it's not all going towards the equipment. If we get your $30,000 plus the additional money that we've raised above that, minus the 10%, then we can put $125,000 towards new equipment rather than just 80 with the cushion. So that means a lot to have that. And, you know, if we get, if we get the Blue Cross Blue Shield, which, you know, you've heard this before, you're a shoe-in, yeah, well, you know. Yeah, that doesn't always happen, but I think it's certainly a worthy project. It just allows us, and what we're going to do with the old equipment is, we're going to go ahead, we're getting a nominal amount for the trade-in on that, very nominal, because it's so old. But, you know, that allows us, you know, 45 more thousand, and that's, that's a lot. You know, equipment today costs more than it did back in 1997. There's no, there's certainly no argument there. And, you know, we have a lot of that equipment, just either, number one, it's broken, or number two, it's, it still works partially, but they can't fix it because the parts aren't there anymore after how many years. So, you know, I guess this campaign right here was to go ahead and say Cresco can, you know, let's, let's go ahead and raise the money. If we can do this, then we worry about the gym. I have a gentleman that wants to give back to Cresco. And for the gym, he asked me, what can I do? And he's looking at a lot of different things. And, and he said, he said, what can I do? And I said, well, not for me to say, but if you wanted to put your name on, I said, we're gonna be, we're looking at having a replacement for a gym at the CFC. And he goes, what would that cost me in order for me to possibly have my name on it? And I said, well, that's going to cost you seven figures. That money's in trust right now. $3 million in trust for that project. So it's there. But we got to prove we can do this first. And I know you guys own the fitness center, you've been throwing money at it. Our goal with the 24/7 is, we're going to charge people five extra dollars a month, $60 a month, in order to be that 24/7. That's what our original thought is. What we're doing in, in May is we're actually going to go out to 24/7 centers and do what their best practices are, what the protocol needs to be, and follow those lines, so we're not, you know, we don't have to recreate the wheel, for example. We're going to see what they do, what works, what doesn't work. So we need, we need to do our due diligence on it, too. But, I mean, we, this, this $30,000 means a lot to us right now. If we get the grant, I mean, Brandon's idea is to try and fix up the front of the fitness center a little bit, the entryway and that stuff, but if you want to, would you like to see that? Sorry, I thought I'd even state, I actually didn't, so.
The $162,000, is that in hand? People donated that money?
Not, not...
For the pledges? Okay, yeah. Thank you, sir.
So line items are, the far right is what our first estimates were, and that was $220,000. And then we said, you know, that's too much money for the 24/7, let's rethink this thing. And so we rethought it, and if you go to the first one right here, with the estimated cost with cushion, right here, and here's the cushion for all those things right here. And then when you see down here, halfway down, you see that $12,722, that's that 10% reserve that comes out of the total. And then this is where we land in the middle with the new estimate cost with cushion, cushion over here, our cushion's $7,600. And we didn't put any cushion in for the, for the fitness equipment, but you can see where we are there. And then you can see down below, some of the astrophysics.
What's, what's the new treadmill cost?
Average one of the day, ones that I think would be beneficial?
Yep.
$4,000, $5,000.
Yeah, there's some that go from, along here, was the four treadmills, was 28 to...
Yeah, it's just all dependent. Nate wants to go for a 20 mile an hour run.
Good show.
And, and grand.
Can I watch?
Yeah, sure.
Don't let go.
Yeah, I'll let it go, and we'll see what happens.
Not to go off on a, on a different chase here, but the old gym, we always talk about, tearing it down, tearing it down.
Yep.
It's an iconic old building. I mean, it sits, well, it sits square from observations, but is the new, the new building that you're going forward, is it going to be lower, I mean, is it going to be a brick-and-mortar building, a pole barn? I mean, what's, what's your thoughts?
And I'm speaking purely on my thoughts and my ideas.
Okay.
My idea for a new building is a single-level building that sits on a concrete slab, much like what the modern fitness center room is, just a little larger, is basically my idea. So centrally located in this new building perhaps could be our two or three full-size basketball courts with your auxiliary rooms on the perimeter. So like a racquetball court and a golf simulator and batting cage, and basically everything just on the outside with your basketball courts in the middle. Very simple, no basement, no dark spots for kids to run away and hide from, very easily monitored, energy efficient.
Easier to heat.
Right.
Obviously, you know, and I'm just, I'm just thinking out long-term, if the building was to stay, obviously there's construction methods in this, in this day and age that, you know, we could utilize that. I mean, again, like I said, I don't have a lot invested in this, but, you know, and we, if we thought that all the way through, the building serves no purpose for what your plans are going forward, the way it sits now.
It certainly does. You know, depending on, you know, if you want to bring it up to this, you know, modern-day heating, and there's no AC up there, so, you know...
Correct.
You know, summer days, it gets pretty scorching hot up there, so, you know, I don't know what that would entail to bring it, you know, to a modern heating and cooling type of situation.
Because the estimate just for the heating was $760,000.
Just to put heating in it?
Just to upgrade those boilers that we talked about.
Right.
And that was not the air conditioning and...
Correct, so...
And it'd have to be a new basketball floor, for sure.
And, you know, I don't know when the last time you were at the fitness center was, but just to kind of give you a recap, there, there are so many unused spaces in this building. I mean, old stairwells and old closets, old locker rooms that, you know, that are basically just barred off because, you know, it would take a tremendous amount of work to be able for us to utilize them in any way other than storage, basically, you know. So it is a lot of wasted space, a building that was not designed to be a modern-day fitness center, so to speak.
So when we did the donations for this project, we want, we didn't want businesses to go ahead and give to this small project, because when we go for the school project, that's when we go to the big employers when we ask for a five-year pledge, because they have all the employees, and this is the public thing. And so we stayed away from businesses on this one, and just one with individuals, but this new one's going to cost us $3 million plus. And, and because you're talking architects, you're talking engineers, you're talking the whole nine yards, and then to get rid of that, you can just imagine what that would cost, to get rid of the actual building.
Yeah, tear the old gym down.
Because you could, you could, or you could literally, you could put new boilers and everything in it and stuff, but it's still not efficient. So you get a new building, kind of like what we have for the exercise, make it longer, put some solar on it, get some, you know, let's, let's get it efficient, so it's not draining this, you know, day to day. It's a big project.
It's going to be a big project, you know, once it gets, we get rolling with this, there's going to be a lot of questions, you know, so just as long as we've done our due diligence upfront, and we've got the facts to back everything up.
It's hard to do this right now, too, because you got the hospital with a fundraiser, and you got the school, and, you know, we're sitting in the middle, and we know what's most important is, number one is our school, is our hospital. This comes third. We were fortunate to give, you know, as much as we got.
What's your, what's your plan, your dates going forward to attempt to tackle that gym? Five, 10, 15 years?
No.
I mean, I'm just...
That's what I was asking for, was the plan for the plan.
In my opinion, I think something has to be decided within a year, which way we're going. I mean, if not sooner, that way we can start taking the necessary steps to getting this thing figured out. That's my opinion. Ideally, as soon as we get this thing wrapped up, moving on to phase two, how can we either construct a new building or repair what we have, so.
Any other questions or thoughts? Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Brandon.
So just like, we're clear, it is budgeted, okay?
Okay, number eight, review applications on Cresco Tourism Advisory Committee recommendations and award of hotel motel tax grants.
So we have $4,000 available? Is that for...
Just as a comment, last quarter, we did not use all of this amount that was available. And if you add last quarter and this quarter together, it's, it's like $100 off or something like that, from being the, the grants matching what, what's available.
So it's only, only need $100, or what?
It only eats into the reserves by like $100, if you add the two quarters together.
And we have, I should have looked at the balance, available, $20,000?
$24,000 or something.
Is this loss money going to go away with the sales tax proposals with the state, then?
Supposedly not. Supposedly, we may actually receive a little bit more.
You seem skeptical.
I think in the short term, it will be about what we've been getting. I don't know.
That's lost.
Once they get control of it, if they, they would change in the future, I don't know.
Isn't the hotel motel tax separate from loss?
Yes, this has nothing to do with loss, so...
Yeah, this is our own.
This is...
This is our own.
Just hotel motel, so it's on the lodging. I don't even know what percentage it is, in Cresco, 7% or something like that? That all goes into this one fund, and then we have to use 50% of it for tourism, and the other 50% goes into our general fund. So back 10, 15 years ago, we made this committee to award it, and we tried to get all the hotel owners to be a part of the recommendation committee, so that we made sure it was lodging-type tourism dollars, but there isn't much interest for participation, I should say.
So be in the...
So usually, the mayor should read the requests, recommendations. I'm sorry, were you going to say something, Jan?
I think I abstain, I'm a member of one of the groups.
You guys can vote, but it's better if somebody else makes the motion.
Well, no, I'm actually a member of one of the groups asking for money.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you should maybe abstain then.
So we'll read up here what the recommendations are, right? So the first one is the Watani Group, they're requesting $800. The committee scores this application favorably, as it promotes and markets Cresco to visitors. The committee recommends awarding $800. The second recommendation for the family fun nights, they requested $2,000. The committee scores this application favorably. Family fun nights bring residents and visitors together, offering unique experiences throughout the year. The committee recommended awarding $2,000. And the third one, Howard County Fair, requested $4,000. The committee scores this application favorably as market, as it markets Cresco and brings in visitors from at least three states. The committee recommended awarding $4,000.
I'll make the motion to go forward with it, then?
I'll second it, I think they're all good.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Abstain.
And McConnell?
Yes.
Okay.
Number nine, motion to award contract for community development block grant owner occupied housing rehab to restyling specialists contingent on executing change order number one.
So we are down to the last two of the six houses that we're rehabilitating. We had to replace the contractor on this house in the middle of the process. So the reason why there's a change order is because we were hoping to be able to do a little bit more work, but we've already spent some of the money, and so we're backed out, so that's why we have to do the change order to reduce part of the project. But hopefully, we did go out for bids, we only received the one bid from this restyling specialist, I believe they're out of Warcon, maybe?
Garnaville.
Garnaville, sorry. So we really appreciate them coming in and finishing the project, because it's kind of like right in the middle of it.
Right.
We have been extended, I don't know how many times now with this CDBG award. They, hard deadline is June 1st, so we have got to have it all done by then, so I'll make that motion.
Second.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yeah.
Buska?
Yes.
Number 10, request for sewer adjustment for water not entering the sanitary sewer system from Donald Reson.
And this is the one from last meeting, and I did go over to his house, and there's no way the water got to the drain.
No way it got to the drain?
No, it's on the complete opposite side of the house, and just the shape of the, the slope of the floor would never allow it, so...
Okay.
Someone?
Second.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Before we move on to the next house, this is, going forward, you know, it seems like we've had a fair amount of these, and when these sewer bills get in there, you know, it really amps it up, they're pretty good. In the past, you know, we haven't made a habit of going and checking these, have we? Verifying it once?
Well, I mean, typically, we know.
I'm just asking the question.
Yep, typically, we'll know. Obviously, our water guys or myself see it or whatever, so...
Because a lot of times, they will call us right in the middle of some of the big ones.
Right.
And so we... Our water guys.
Like, a lot of times, they'll call our water guys, they need help shutting it off, or how can they pump it out, or different things like that. So a lot of times, we're on scene at the time of the incident.
Okay. Number 11, request for sewer adjustment for water not entering the sanitary sewer system from Mary Lindell.
And I don't know if you guys read the letter that she wrote or not, so I did go over to the house, and they, her son showed me what happened. Did it happen that way? I don't know. I mean, the valve, it was, it's an oval-shaped valve, so if a garbage can fell on it, I mean, it, it cracked pretty easily. So to turn the water on, so I, I can't say it happened, I can't say it didn't happen.
On the outside of the house?
Correct.
So it never went in the sewer?
Correct.
I mean, as long as it don't go in the sewer, they pay the water bill.
In the past, we have turned down, or declined requests, say if somebody was watering their yard, forgot to shut off the water overnight. We have declined those. When it's them forgetting to turn it off, or whatever reason, we have declined them. So it's a fine line, but...
How much was it? I didn't see.
$680.70 possible credit.
With that, with the sewer?
That's only the sewer portion.
Only the sewer portion? But they still paid to pull them out of the water? But they still pay the full amount of the water?
Yes, because they used it, so, yes, we always make them pay for the full amount of the water.
So they pay for the water, but the sewer is what they want to help with?
Right. So that's why we say if it doesn't enter the sanitary sewer, we can justify it because we didn't have to pay to treat it. When it, when we have to pay to treat it, that's why we decline the ones that are in their garbage, or in their toilets or their water softeners. That's our reasoning.
Yeah, I'll second it, as long as it don't go in the sanitary sewer and they pay the water, that's all that matters.
Carmen?
Be careful about saying that because we've also turned down people who filled their, their swimming pools.
Right.
Or watered their garden and left the water on.
Yeah. Or if they can't find anything that happened, we have declined that too because we can't prove that it did not go in the water, the sanitary sewer. Because in this case, it could have been a toilet, not really their outside faucet, so it's, it's hard to know.
Right, that's why I said I, it could have happened. Yeah, I can't say it did, I can't say that, I don't, I don't know.
Fair enough.
And she was one that we caught when we did the billing, so she hadn't called before we called her.
Okay. So you've got a first and a second, so...
So, Carmen?
No.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Buska?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
The last item, number 13, discuss rate increases for potential ordinance amendments.
That's the one with sewer.
So we typically on July 1st do a rate adjustment. Currently, we, based on the consumption and assuming the last three months are about what we're expecting, we should be a little bit over budget this year than what we had originally budgeted. So it's just a matter of how much of an increase we want to do. I suggest that we do some kind of increase every year. When you look at our upcoming projects and our, especially the recurring things that happen every four to six years, and they are $60,000 to $600,000 for each of those projects, we need to have the reserves handy. The sewer has a nice reserve balance, however, their equipment is getting aged old, needs to be replaced. We have quite a list of equipment that's gonna have to be replaced in the next five to 10 years. And there's also the nutrient reduction. And so WHKS is working on a report that's due on May 1st, so at the next meeting on April 17th, we'll also be reviewing the nutrient reduction report. It's basically about a 28-page report asking the Iowa DNR to extend the deadline for us to meet their new required phosphorus and nitrogen levels. Terribly expensive, I mean, $11 million probably. So we know that's coming someday. We keep trying to push them off, showing that because of all of our expenses that we have, showing that we've been doing rate increases, we've been trying to maintain our system, we're trying to maintain our equipment, that we just literally cannot afford the upgrade that they are recommending that we would have to do to reach their limits. So we're asking for another extension of the five years before we would be required to implement a plan. So that's what we will be talking about in the next meeting.
Because isn't there some level of charges versus median income that...
Yep.
...triggers like a hardship exemption or something? I mean, I remember this from the law back when...
Yep. And so we will be reaching that if we, especially if we are replacing some of this equipment that we're expecting to be faltering here in the next five years, so I think it's over, I can't say off the top of my head, but what percentage of that median household income is, but yes, our rates are high, but unfortunately, the operating of that sewer plant is extremely high. Anytime we have a failure, it's $100,000, it seems like.
I believe Decor is budgeting right now for a $4 or $5 million sewer plant.
Okay.
Something, yep. Yep, I think it's in the budget they're talking about probably tonight, too, so...
Yeah, unfortunately, I mean, it's millions of dollars, we start talking about this stuff, so... I mean, she, we've pointed out 1.2 million of equipment in the next five years, plus another $2.4 million worth of equipment, so that's $3.5 million in the next 10 years just for the equipment, just the old stuff that needs to be replaced. That's all stuff that would be replaced whether or not we do nutrient reduction or not, so we're not replacing anything that we think would possibly be upgraded when we do that, so this is all the other stuff, so...
Do we actively go out and, or do we have somebody that looks for funding, federal funding for these sewer projects? Because you read, you know, I mean, we just spent, what, $1.7 trillion infrastructure bill?
So, yes, there is a lot of CDBG and actually, I mean, we're gonna be working with Angie as soon as we're done with the nutrient reduction report on this age-related. There's a, I don't remember the name of it right now, there is some CDBG funding for that and it's like a loan forgiveness plan, so we're gonna be applying for it. One of the problems is it has to be American-made to be part, to be eligible for this grant for the loan forgiveness part. A lot of the pumps that are used at the sewer plant, a lot of that stuff is not American-made, so we're gonna have to go through and pick out the things that would be eligible and then combine those into an application. So we're already talking about starting to work on that after we're done with this nutrient reduction, so the next project.
I'll just comment that I took this and I took the expenses and I spread them out over the next 10 years, I mean, depending on when they were going to happen and stuff like that, and it gets pretty scary when you, when you, you add those in because the projected profit here doesn't count any of those expenses. I, it's, as you say, I mean, it's just, I think we need 6% on the sewer and 4% on the water. But, but I don't know what the appropriate level of reserves is.
I don't think you can have enough.
Well, all of those reserves come out of somebody's, somebody's paying you.
Yeah, $11 million coming up.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's really scary when you spread these out and inflate the numbers because all of these numbers are today's dollars. And so if expenses are going up at the same rate that our, that our rates go up, you know...
Is this 4% per year or...
Well, you, I think it implies a 4% water increase this year and you look at it every year and say, okay, how much am I pulling out of reserves, how much am I putting in reserves, am I happy with those numbers? But Michelle and I couldn't get our spreadsheets to agree, so I guess we need to, we need to resolve that.
You can set the rate for several years if you want to. We have typically reevaluated every single year, just, it, it's a good time to talk, otherwise you don't even talk if it's automatic renewal and you're not really analyzing it. There's just so much that comes up each year, I think it's good to have this conversation to start looking at some of the project's equipment that's coming up for some of these.
Well, I mean, does this water and sewer thing you guys are talking about, would that have the increases built in there that we're talking about? Their spreadsheets, I don't think they put...
Nutrient reduction, we, we aren't even funding for that, we're just trying to cover like this 3.5 million equipment that we know we have to do. Our whole goal on that nutrient reduction is showing the DNR that we are, we can't afford to do it.
Okay.
So we are trying to get them to keep pushing it off and not commit us to saying it has to be up and operating in five years or...
This nutrient reduction program, that's for every, every town in the state of Iowa that has a public sewer and waterworks, correct?
My understanding.
Anyone with a point source discharge, so an industry, a town, as far as I know, the only people who get off are the non-point source, which are basically all of the farmland in Iowa. Who are 84% of the problem.
So it's interesting when we've seen kind of a draft of this nutrient reduction and they've set the limit here and our daily is way up here. I mean, it, it's such a low limit that they are trying to make us adhere to that we have to do the upgrades that are so expensive, so it's, it's too extreme. So by proving to pay for that $11 million, if we were to borrow the money or whatever, our rates would have to be so high that I don't know that they could even force us to do it because it'd be such a high percentage of median income, but...
What happened, Nate, in Lime Springs? Didn't they just spend millions of dollars on a sewer plant?
They have not yet, that I'm aware of.
Or just one or the other?
I'm not sure.
That's, read the city minutes, that's gonna be an interesting conversation going forward up there because what they're talking about doing is spending millions of dollars and Lime Springs don't have it.
Yeah, because they got a big grant for the beef plant, I believe, right?
The meat plant.
Something like that, I mean, I saw something about $6 million, but I don't know, I mean, I don't know how you pay for that.
Did the, the beef plant get a big grant?
They did, but the city of Lime Springs is also looking, the beef plant has to do something as well with their water and sewer, so they're looking, the city is looking to work with them and maybe it would help both.
Does their water and sewer come from the city?
Their, their sewer is basically like their toilets and water and stuff like that. What they flush everything with goes into a leach field or something like that.
Yeah.
So they don't have a whole lot of waste, but they do, I think they drain our water tower almost every day.
Do they?
Yeah, so, or close to it.
And they're talking about increasing their, what I read that the amount of gallons per, per animal for cleanup is gonna go up considerably.
Well, because they're gonna like not double, but you know, half again as much anyway of animals.
You know, I think we need to, we need to have discussion on it, obviously, but you know, just with everything going on now with the evaluations going up and inflation and then people have been taken a pretty good hit, you know? We just come off the, the garbage thing, how aggressive do we need to be and...
Right. Were you hoping for some decisions tonight or just, we're just discussing it?
I was hoping for decisions. To, we have to set the rates by ordinance, so it takes us three council meetings to pass it. So at the very, very, very latest would be the second meeting in May, we'd have to start reading, having our first reading of the ordinance change. So we can postpone it. My problem is April 17th is gonna be super busy meeting, probably be an hour and a half before we even get to rates again. May 1st, we'll be having the public hearing on the 7th Street, so that's gonna be another busy, busy night possibly. But I guess I sent this out early in the week, hoping that I would get some questions and, you know, we could work some numbers, but Amy is the only one that's reached out so far, so I guess I don't know...
Right.
...what you guys want to look at to make your determination.
And Amy, what was your thought again?
Four and six.
Four and six.
Four and the water.
Yeah, well, I, I think, because we're using the federal money for the tower, I think that that works and it maintains, again, who knows what the right level of reserves is, but it maintains a decent level of reserves if it's 4% for the next 10 years.
Tim, as long as you're here. You know, so we, I have like the water tower possibly having to be repainted in 20 years. I have $600,000 for that project in 20 years from now, but we may not have to do as much as we did with this project because we're doing some of these improvements, right? Do you have a better number for me to...
In 20 years.
Put you on the spot for a 20-year prediction.
To the news, Kenny, please.
What I, what I would say is that the, the level, I can, I can try and come up with an estimate for you, but I would say that the level that I would expect, it will be much less worth than what you're going through presently. You're currently in a full blast and recode of both the exterior and the wet interior. It would be my impression that in the 15 to 18-year window, you would be looking at an overcoat of the exterior and potentially nothing on the wet interior, so much less money than what this project is. But I would have a hard time guessing though, I mean, just in the last year alone, coating manufacturers, I've seen four price increases, you know, that they just came out quarterly with another price increase for coating, so it's really hard for us to speculate out even...
In today's dollars, what would an exterior overcoat be? We could kind of look at that, 300?
You could almost, you could almost say about half of what this project is.
About 300,000?
So I know that's not exactly what you're asking me, but it's hard for me to see that far.
I don't bet in 20 years, 600 might be light.
Yeah, I know, it's...
I haven't taken that into...
What are we looking at with the, this paint job we're putting on? What's a guaranteed life expectancy? I mean, the warranty, for lack of better terms, 15 years?
No, the coating manufacturer won't warranty it for 15 years.
10 years?
No, they're, they're usually like a year to two years for the coating.
Yeah.
For what they're going, ah, no, I take that back. There is going to be a longer warranty from the coating manufacturer, I don't have that number off the top of my head.
What about the, the application? I mean, they stand behind their work, obviously?
Yeah, and the agreement that you, the amendment that you approved for us tonight, they'll have a warranty inspection at the end of the year, and if there is a failure, they'll always present themselves in the year, contractors required to come back and make those repairs. The coating is... The rate it would be, it's not the entry... I'll have to look and see what the coating manufacturer is...
I'd be interested to know that.
Yep.
If they stand behind that stuff.
Yep, I can find out, it's, it's typically related to gloss, you know, so that you've got the shine there that you're looking for on the water. I'll have to see what they say or what their warranty...
4%, 4%.
Thank you.
It'd be $4 per month.
So Amy mentioned a 4% and a 6%, any other thoughts, questions?
Looking at 6% on sewer, that's 57 cents more per 1,000 gallons currently in water. At 4%, that's 23,000, or 23 cents per 1,000 gallons, that's not a, I mean, it, it's an increase, yes, but when you actually look at it from a dollars instead, cents standpoint, that's minor.
Yeah.
I would, I, if Amy makes the motion, I would second that on the 6% and 4%.
What is the average, the average person in the city of Cresco?
So I had sent out this...
Is that on the bottom?
This sample, so say residential, probably two people in your family would probably use around 3,800 gallons per month. So right now, their bill with garbage recycling, water, sewer would be like $92.47. I had just used 4% and 4% as increases, that would be a $4 increase per month for that family, so they would go from 92.47 to 96.46, and that's including the 4% that, because garbage is already set for the next five years to increase 4%.
$4.
So that's $4, includes the garbage increase and the water and the sewer increases for off... a family of about two.
And potentially capital improvements.
Oh yeah, I did add 50 cents per month for capital improvement charge. That was the other thing I wanted to discuss. We have $3.50 on every bill. If you have a meter, then you get that capital improvement charge. That goes into that 620 fund and we use it for water sewer and storm sewer infrastructure, like the smaller type projects. We have not increased it since 2016, I think it is. So I was just wondering if we wanted to think about increasing that. But if we are thinking in the near future of putting in a stormwater utility, then maybe we don't increase this one. Or we increase this one and when we put in the stormwater utility, we could maybe reduce this if it's gonna start paying for some of the stormwater expenses that are normally paid with this fund. So I guess I would kind of suggest possibly increasing that as well. The nice thing about that is it hits everybody, but.
I, I would have no problem with the 4 and 6% either.
I mean, I should say that when you look at it with a 4 and a 4, in the, you know, in the next year, it doesn't look very different and, and, but you end up with a way different reserve 10 years from now. If we don't wanna do 6, but we wanna do 4, it just means, in my opinion, we'll have to take more of an increase at another time. But it's not, I don't think we're gonna die this year in any sense.
Right, right. Chan or Gary, do you have any thoughts or questions?
I, I just got a feeling we, we're gonna raise it, you're gonna raise it. I know what it's gotta be done, but it's not gonna sit well.
Yeah.
It's just.
It's all at the same time with the?
Everything, everything's coming and then it's just with every, and I know we gotta have the increases for the infrastructure, but.
Well, one option would be 4 and 4 and look, but take the capital improvement charge increase and then look and see what we start getting out of stormwater numbers. I mean, I have no idea what's gonna come out of that.
How does that work, that stormwater that you, how is that supposed to generate?
Based on your impervious area? In other words, how much, how, if, if I paved over, well, not my house, because houses tend to be just a blank charge, but you know, a standard charge. But if somebody paves over their entire area, they pay more than if somebody's got one building and a bunch of grass.
So every house in town is gonna be hit with this stormwater utility charge?
Yeah, because look at where we're spending over on 7th Street. Bunch of money.
And Oliver on 2nd or what?
Yeah.
Street is that?
Yep, second down there.
So. The infrastructure is old and the rains are worse.
I get a lot of water coming off the curb because I don't have curb in front of my house, so I should get a credit then, right?
Yeah. And, and I think I should get a credit because I have rain gardens, but I don't think we're gonna get that.
We're too complicated for billing.
Yeah. So is there any motions made tonight then?
I thought we had one.
Did you make a motion, anybody or not?
No, I didn't need a motion. Somebody else had a motion.
I'll make, I'll make the motion for 6 sewer and 4 water.
Did you want to do it in capital improvement or not?
I, honestly, I'd rather wait until we understand what we were looking at with the stormwater utility.
And realize that is probably six months to a year before that would be implemented. So, I mean.
I, I didn't know if, with reading of the ordinance, how much that changes that? Is it, is it gonna be redundant and we're gonna end up redoing it six months after we implement it or?
Well, we'll have to redo the ordinance anyways for the stormwater utility and so we could just, all it is is a one-line item of changing the rate.
Sorry Dave, I tried.
Sorry, I mean, I just hate to push off the revenue if, I mean, we've talked about stormwater utility for five years, so we're hoping to get it implemented.
With the increase in Iowa communities that are going to the stormwater utility, I think we strongly need to look at it because the 7th Street project is a huge glaring thing that we're, it, it's been overlooked in the past and we definitely need to do something.
And at the time we implement that, we can look at all of our rates. I mean, it's not because we set it at this that we have to.
They have a tendency to go up, but they very seldom ever go the other direction, so.
That is a true statement.
So your motion again?
Just, I, I would rather do the, the 6 and 4 right now, 6 sewer, 4 water for right now and then look at the capital improvement once we know more about the stormwater.
All right.
I can second that.
Amy seconds?
Um, Buska?
Yes.
Kreener?
No.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Um, that was the last item. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.
Sewer thing you guys were talking about, did, would that have the increases built in there that we're talking about? Their spreadsheets, I don't think they put them in.
That nutrient reduction, we, we aren't even funding for that. We're just trying to cover like this 3.5 million equipment that we know we have to do. Our whole goal on the nutrient reduction is showing the DNR that we are, we can't afford to do it. So we are trying to get them to keep pushing it off and not commit us to saying it has to be up and operating in five years or what.
This nutrient reduction program, that's for every, every town in the state of Iowa that has a, a public sewer and waterworks, correct?
My understanding.
Anyone with a point source discharge, so an industry, a town. As far as I know, the only people who get off are the non-point source, which are basically all of the farmland in Iowa. Who are 84% of the problem.
So it's interesting when we've seen kind of a draft of this nutrient reduction and they've set the limit here and our daily is way up here. I mean, it, it's such a low limit that they are trying to make us adhere to that we have to do the upgrades that are so expensive. So it's, it's too extreme. So by proving to pay for that 11 million dollars, if we were to borrow the money or whatever, our rates would have to be so high that I don't know that they could even force us to do it because it'd be such a high percentage of median income, but.
What happened Nate in Lime Springs? Didn't they just spend millions of dollars on a sewer plant?
They have not yet.
Or tested one or the other.
Uh, I'm not sure.
That's, you read the city minutes. That's gonna be an interesting conversation going forward up there because what they're talking about doing is spending millions of dollars and Lime Springs don't have it.
Yeah, cuz they got a big grant for the beef plant, I believe, right?
The meat plant.
Something like that. I mean, I saw something about 6 million dollars, but I don't know. I mean, I don't know how you pay for that.
Did the, the beef plant get a big grant?
They did, but the city of Lime Springs is also looking, the beef plant has to do something as well with their water and sewer. So they're looking, the city is looking to work with them and maybe it would help both.
Does their water and sewer come from the city?
Their, their sewer is basically like their toilets and water and stuff like that. What they flush everything with goes into a leach field or something like that. So they don't have a whole lot of waste, but they do, I think they drain our water tower almost every day.
Do they?
Yeah. So, or close to it.
And they're talking about increasing their, what I read, the, the amount of gallons per, per animal for cleanup is gonna go up considerably.
Well, cuz they're gonna like not double, but you know, half again as much anyway of animals.
You know, I think we need to, we need to have discussion on it, obviously, but you know, just with everything going on now with the evaluations going up and inflation and then people have been taken pretty good hit, you know? We just come off the, the garbage thing. How, how aggressive do we need to be and?
Right. Right. Were you hoping for some decisions tonight or just, we're just discussing it?
I was hoping for decisions. Um, to, we have to set the, the rates by ordinance, so it takes us three council meetings to pass it. So at the very, very, very latest would be the second meeting in May. You'd have to start re, having our first reading of the ordinance change. So we can postpone it. My problem is April 17th is gonna be super busy meeting. It'll probably be an hour and a half before we even get to rates again. May 1st will be having the public hearing on the 7th Streets. That's gonna be another busy pro, busy night possibly. But I guess I sent this out early in the week hoping that I would get some questions and you know, we could work some numbers, but Amy is the only ones who've reached out so far, so I guess I don't know.
Right.
What you guys want to look at to make your determination.
And Amy, what was your thought again?
Four and six.
Four and six.
Four and the water.
Yeah, well, I, I think because we're using the federal money for the tower, um, I think that, that works and it maintains, again, who knows what the right level of reserves is, but it maintains a decent level of reserves if it's 4% for the next 10 years.
Tim, as long as you're here. Um, you know, so we, I have like the water tower possibly having to be repainted in 20 years. I have $600,000 for that project in 20 years from now, but we may not have to do as much as we did with this project because we're doing some of these improvements, right? Do you have a better number for me to?
In 20 years.
Put you on the spot for a 20-year prediction.
To the news, Penny, please.
What I, what I would say is that the, the level, I can, I can try and come up with an estimate for you, but I would say that the level that I would expect, it will be much less worth than what you're going through presently. You're currently in a full blast and recode of wolfy exterior and the wet interior. It would be my impression that in the 15 to 18-year window, you would be looking at an overcoat of the exterior and potentially nothing on the wet interior. So much less money than what this project is. But I would have a hard time guessing though. I mean, just in the last year alone, coating manufacturers, I've seen four price increases. You know, the, they just came out quarterly with another price increase for coating. So it, it's really hard for us to speculate out even.
In today's dollars, what would a exterior overcoat be? We could kinda looked at that. 300?
You could almost, you could almost say about half of what this project is.
About 300,000?
So I know that's not exactly what you're asking me, but it's hard for me to see that.
I don't bet in 20 years, 600 might be light.
Yeah, I know, it's.
I haven't taken any too.
What are we looking at with the, this paint job we're putting on? What's a guaranteed life expectancy? I mean, the warranty, for lack of better terms, 15 years?
No, the coating manufacturer won't warranty it for 15 years.
10 years?
No, they're, they're usually like a year to two years for the coating. For what they're going, uh, no, I take that back. There is going to be a longer warranty from the coating manufacturer. I don't have that number off the top of my head.
What about the, the application? I mean, they stand behind their work, obviously?
Yeah, and the agreement that you, the amendment that you approved for us tonight, they'll have a warranty inspection at the end of the year. And if there is a failure, they'll always present themselves in the year. Contractors required to come back and make those repairs. The coating is. Is that the rate it would be? It's not the increase. I'll have to look and see what the coating manufacturer is.
I'd be interested to know that.
Yep.
They stand behind that stuff.
I can find that. It's, it's typically related to gloss, you know, so that you've got the shine there that you're looking for on water. I'll have to see what they say or what their warranty.
4%, 4%.
Thank you.
Be $4 per month.
So Amy mentioned a 4 and a 6%. Any other thoughts, questions?
Looking at 6% on sewer, that's 57 cents more per 1,000 gallons currently in water. At 4%, that's 23,000, or 23 cents per 1,000 gallons. That's not a, I mean, it, it's an increase, yes, but when you actually look at it from a dollars instead of cents standpoint, that's minor.
Yeah.
I would, I, if Amy makes the motion, I would second that on the 6 and 4%.
What is, what is the average, the average person in the city of Cresco?
So I had sent out this.
Is that on the bottom?
Sample. So say residential, probably two people in your family would probably use around 3,800 gallons per month. So right now, their bill with garbage recycling, water sewer would be like $92.47. I had just used 4% and 4% as increases. That would be a $4 increase per month for that family. So they would go from 92.47 to 96.46. And that's including the 4% that, cuz garbage is already set for the next five years to increase 4%.
$4.
So that's $4 includes the garbage increase and the water and the sewer increases for a family of about two.
And potentially capital improvements.
Oh yeah, I did add 50 cents per month for capital improvement charge. That was the other thing I wanted to discuss. We have $3.50 on every bill. If you have a meter, then you get that capital improvement charge. That goes into that 620 fund and we use it for water sewer and storm sewer infrastructure, like the smaller type projects. We have not increased it since 2016, I think it is. So I was just wondering if we wanted to think about increasing that. But if we are thinking in the near future of putting in a stormwater utility, then maybe we don't increase this one. Or we increase this one and when we put in the stormwater utility, we could maybe reduce this if it's gonna start paying for some of the stormwater expenses that are normally paid with this fund. So I guess I would kind of suggest possibly increasing that as well. The nice thing about that is it hits everybody, but.
I, I would have no problem with the 4 and 6% either.
I mean, I should say that when you look at it with a 4 and a 4, in the, you know, in the next year, it doesn't look very different and, and, but you end up with a way different reserve 10 years from now. If we don't wanna do 6, but we wanna do 4, it just means, in my opinion, we'll have to take more of an increase at another time. But it's not, I don't think we're gonna die this year in any sense.
Right, right. Chan or Gary, do you have any thoughts or questions?
I, I just got a feeling we, we're gonna raise it, you're gonna raise it. I know what it's gotta be done, but it's not gonna sit well.
Yeah.
It's just.
It's all at the same time with the?
Everything, everything's coming and then it's just with every, and I know we gotta have the increases for the infrastructure, but.
Well, one option would be 4 and 4 and look, but take the capital improvement charge increase and then look and see what we start getting out of stormwater numbers. I mean, I have no idea what's gonna come out of that.
How does that work, that stormwater that you, how is that supposed to generate?
Based on your impervious area? In other words, how much, how, if, if I paved over, well, not my house, because houses tend to be just a blank charge, but you know, a standard charge. But if somebody paves over their entire area, they pay more than if somebody's got one building and a bunch of grass.
So every house in town is gonna be hit with this stormwater utility charge?
Yeah, because look at where we're spending over on 7th Street. Bunch of money.
And Oliver on 2nd or what?
Yeah.
Street is that?
Yep, second down there.
So.
Yep, sucking them up.
The infrastructure is old and the rains are worse.
I get a lot of water coming off the curb because I don't have curb in front of my house, so I should get a credit then, right?
Yeah. And, and I think I should get a credit because I have rain gardens, but I don't think we're going to get that.
You're too complicated for billing.
So is there any motions made tonight then?
I thought we had one.
Did you make a motion, anybody?
No, I don't need a motion.
Somebody else had a motion.
So far.
I'll make, I'll make the motion for six sewer and four water.
Did you want to do it in capital improvement or not?
I honestly, I'd rather wait until we understand what we were looking at with the stormwater utility.
And realize that is probably six months to a year before that would be implemented. So, I mean.
I didn't know with reading of the ordinance, how much that changes that? Is it, is it going to be redundant and we're going to end up redoing it six months after we implement it or?
Well, we'll have to redo the ordinance anyways for the stormwater utility and so we could just, all it is is a one-line item, changing the rate.
Sorry, Dave, I tried.
Sorry, I mean, I just hate to push off the revenue if, I mean, we've talked about stormwater utility for five years, so we're hoping to get it implemented.
With the increase in Iowa communities that are going to the stormwater utility, I think we strongly need to look at it because the 7th Street project is a huge glaring thing that we're, it's been overlooked in the past and we definitely need to do something.
And at the time we implement that, we can look at all of our rates. I mean, it's not because we set it at this that we have to.
They have a tendency to go up, but they very seldom ever go the other direction, so.
That is a true statement.
So your motion again?
Just, I would rather do the six and four right now, six sewer, four water for right now and then look at the capital improvement once we know more about the stormwater.
All right.
I can second that.
Amy seconds?
Buska?
Yes.
Kreener?
No.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
That was the last item. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.